Today is Monday, January 6th, 2022. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Ms. Garcia, can you please present a roll call? That's okay, I can do roll call. Councilmember Mendoza?
I need to pause the meeting for a second. Our connection to our recording system has been lost.
Clarified, thank you. We're going to pause for one moment. There is a technical difficulty being experienced with the recording. Thank you, Mayor. We have recovered our technical issue. All right. Roll call. Mayor Walter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cordes?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Hughes?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you so much. At this time, we will rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you so much. At this time, if you are online, if you would like to speak during our first call to the public, if you could raise your hand, that will help address any delay in that timing. At this time, we are going to open up our first call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within a jurisdiction of the town council. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be placed on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take any action unless those matters are noted for legal action and properly noticed for discussion. At this time, I do have four speakers and one hand raised. I would like to call forward Mr. Ed Kirin.
Ed Kirin, 402 Barrell Cactus, Florence, Arizona. And I want to apologize to the mayor and to the council members because I think last week this issue was brought up. But I'm talking about the garbage disposal area that's going to be put on Ruggles and Warner. I own a home on Ruggles and Warner, and I do not want a garbage depot there. I do not want garbage there. If you guys want to do something with it, please put a park there. Put something nice. This is the middle of town. These places are not meant to be in the middle of a town. So I am totally against it. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Kirin. Olga Ruiz? Hi, Joe, how are you this evening?
I'm well. How are you, Madam Mayor?
Good, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Mayor Walter and Mr. Eaton, as you both know, the subject of community cleanup, trash, has resulted in many meetings and steady communication over the course of approximately two years. I add, the illegal dumping issues have improved in town, especially in our public park heritage. However, the idea of an eco station possibly being set up in the neighborhood of several of us here this evening who are opposed needs further thought and consideration. We are aware Town of Florence owns other land sites more conducive to said kind of station. The thought of attraction of increase in insects, flying debris, stray feral animals, rodents, and excessive odors is alarming. The hours of operation, I understand, will mirror those of many who have the same work hours of employees from our public works. Many of our community members have those same working hours. So this said, how will this station benefit the working folks in our community during working hours? The location of an eco station in the surrounding municipalities of Coolidge and also Magic Ranch, for example, are not found in community neighborhoods. Instead, they are built in areas that do not affect community members in any way. I ask you, please, consider building an eco station on the land south of our cemetery. This land is already being utilized by Town of Florence as a dumping ground of sorts. Adding trash receptacles in that area would eliminate the concern of aforementioned conditions that community members like myself have. The area between Sixth Street and that of Heritage Park would not be a good site either. What exists in that area currently is close to the back fence lines of many of the residents who live there off of Sixth Street. On the subject of monitoring, how will monitoring of this eco station be done? More importantly, what about weekends? Regarding debris and trash containment, so it doesn't end up in my yard and in the yard of several of us here this evening, what will we use as a perimeter barrier? A plastic temporary fence? Chain link fence? I urge each of you to please carefully consider the type of enclosure needed to surround an eco station, regardless of where it may be placed. I also ask and encourage you to-
Ms. Ruiz? If you want to give your statement to Ms. Garcia, because she can print it for us, I was trying to give you that time.
Oh, okay.
I appreciate everything that you said, and I want to make sure that your message is heard, so I appreciate you also-
Thank you, I appreciate that.
-also writing that down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hermeline Wick? There's a timer. Ms. Garcia, can you show us where that timer is? Is it behind me up here, or is it where they can see it as well?
It's right there on the screen.
Okay. Just so that way everybody can be cognizant, because I want to be respectful of everybody's time and making sure everybody's heard.
My concern also is about the discussed location for the disposal area. My husband and I have lived here for 13 years, and if it were placed there in the middle of town, it will be the first town of many that I have lived in that ever has a disposal situation like that in the middle of a town. They're usually out on the outskirts where they belong, and an area like that, it would be better served with a little community park or something like that. And it's also a main thoroughfare for tourists coming into our main street in Florence. And I don't think as a town, we want our tourists to be going, having to pass a disposal area. So, thank you.
Ms. Kathy Adam?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. And thank you for listening. I also want to speak about the utilities storage shed. I understand the council is not required to have a hearing because it's a Town of Florence project. But I am speaking tonight as an individual and as someone who actually lives on the street where this is going to be placed, who happens to also be on planning and zoning. And since I'm on planning and zoning, I've had the pleasure of trying to understand a little more about what you all do on heated topics. I have been the recipient of emails and texts and calls on these important subjects. So it's just interesting to me that we just heard the case for the conditional use permit on the RV storage, which I believe is on the agenda. And when we heard that, that is, of course, a zoning change or conditional use permit. So it had a community meeting, it had two public hearings, it had presence of council members, and I believe the mayor at one point, and council. Contrast that to this, where there is no community meeting required, there are no public hearings required, and they were actually not allowed at P&amp;Z as a matter of form. When we did have a member of the public who wanted to speak before we voted, was not allowed. So I appreciate you taking the residents' input tonight. It's very important. And let me just say, we spend a lot of time on planning and zoning about landscaping and being sure the aesthetics are right, and you're talking about a highway. This has residences on all four sides, if you count the existing maintenance building. We will have three city blocks of metal industrial structures in the heart of our town. So I guess my ask tonight is that you consider having some public input. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment just to respond, and I know it's not criticism that, you know, you provided, but it is just feedback that I want to give, and I would like to take a moment also to give direction. I'll give direction to interim town manager to delegate and set out, you know, a meeting, a work session where we can further discuss this as a group, to provide some background knowledge in regards to that process. That land was specifically purchased for that usage approximately two years ago because, as Ms. Ruiz had mentioned, Heritage Park was being overrun with people illegally dumping and making an absolute eyesore of a mess that took so much time, not only to clean up, but it really ruined the aesthetics of what we were trying to accomplish downtown. The reason why this property would not go through, you know, the meetings that Ms. Adams just stated is because of how it is zoned and the usage. So I just wanted to take a moment and clarify the two, because it's important just that we all understand it. And I also, again, want to say thank you to everybody that's coming out and, you know, sharing and communicating, because that's also important, and it makes us unified and stronger when we're all working together for the best of our town. Talma Harmon? I have a Talma Beal-Harmon-
She may be out in the lobby because we're at overflow capacity, so it'll be just a few seconds.
Okay. What I'll do is, Erin, if you could, no, I apologize, and I have, if you would like to see if Talma is out there, I'll move on to Clayton Cathimer. Is he in here?
Also in the lobby.
Okay. How are you, Talma?
I have a little lost breath. I had to run. Thank you so much. My name is Talma Beal-Harmon. My address is 515 North Warner, so, and I am speaking just from my heart. I didn't come with anything prepared. My address is at the crossroads of Warner and Ruggles, which means that the ecosystem station that you're proposing will be in my front and backyard. My concern is the health issues that could possibly, probably occur. I just know from past experience, having systems such as what we're proposing now, you're proposing, has a tendency to draw rodents, snakes, which I'm deathly afraid of.
Me too.
And, you too? As well as debris. And should somebody unwittingly dump something that's not approved, like chemicals, we're talking illnesses that could be long lasting. I have several health issues that I would be concerned about. I have a granddaughter who's not even two yet, and I wouldn't want to think about her having health issues because of the proximity that we will be to the eco station. I would like for the committee, for the council, to consider somewhere other than the middle of any community, any neighborhood. I wouldn't want to see any person, child, adult, retired like me, wanting to enjoy the rest of my life without having to worry about breathing, chemicals, to be subjected to it. We have lots of land available where I think that could be accomplished, and so I'm asking that you would consider that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Clayton Cathimer?
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, council members, grateful to be here today. I'm also here on the eco station. I have a house currently in escrow that's in that vicinity, and it, although I don't have all the information about it, the one thing that I am in opposition of is the trash situation. Watching anything on Facebook and social media outlets that show photo evidence of what happens at Heritage Park with the dumping station, it's terrible, and I only see that reoccurring anywhere else that you put it, especially anywhere that's near residential zones. What I don't understand, and this is something that, this is probably just from lack of knowledge, but if you can haul a mattress, couch, washing machine, dishwasher, whatever you are going to dump at these areas, the dump gives you five free tons a month, and it is like, it has been a lifesaver in the house that I've been renovating the past year and a half. I've not come close to five tons in one month, and I've tried. So I would say that if there's any way that you would just consider moving the trash receptacles anywhere that would be in a more appropriate place, it would be much appreciated. My understanding is that there's going to be offices or something along the lines of an expansion of public works, and while I don't want to have an opinion one way or another, I have to have all the information in that specific category, I would just like to voice my opinion of opposition in trash and recycle in that area. Thank you so much for hearing my message.
Thank you. Appreciate your time coming out to present your message. Ms. Mary Battle, online?
Mary, if you could unmute your microphone so you can speak.
Mary, can you hear us?
I did not raise my hand. I'm just sitting here listening.
Okay. No worries, Mary. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Tara.
And Ms. Sheri Har?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. And I want to say, I am so proud of all of our Floridian people in the audience right now. I apologize that I could not make it in person, but I also wanted to piggyback up the concerns of the eco station. We have had our house, and I live on 325 North Warner, I am one block on the same road that they plan on putting this eco station. We have had our home in our family for over 80 years. It's bad enough, we had the fire department on Ruggles and Warner, then from the fire department, it changed over to public works. We hear those generators kick on all hours of the day. We hear people out there working at 6:00 AM, and my bedroom window is right there. We had issues with the well, which caused a lot of mosquitoes, and we had to contact EPA, and that was not an easy battle. My neighbor, he took on that concern. And again, with this eco station right in the middle of our neighborhood, a main corridor into Main Street, and once again, an eyesore, who's going to monitor it? Who's going to ensure that there's no bugs, there's no rodents, there's no snakes, there's no illegal dumping? I just think this needs to be looked at further. There's a great place, and it's on Plant Road and Butte, over by the wastewater system. Put it way out there. Go to Coolidge, look on Coolidge Avenue West, you go west on Coolidge Avenue in Coolidge, Arizona. Look where their eco station is at. It's not in the middle of a residential area. It would be more conducive and a lot more appeasing to everybody to not have this in our neighborhood. So thank you all, and again, thank you, everybody from Florence who showed up to voice their concerns. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sheri. Is there anybody else in the audience that wanted to speak during this first call to the public? All right. So again, I'll just close with, at this time, we'll give direction to staff, just to put together some background information. We'll present again, you know, so that way everybody is on the same page, has all of the same information regarding how we got here, and, you know, just exploring where we go from here. So, thank you. I will make sure Ms. Garcia has these. I also took notes regarding what everybody had communicated. Closing our first call to the public and then moving into item six, which is our public hearings and presentation. Six A is an acceptance of a donation of $2,000 from the Michelle Gallagher Memorial Foundation. Ms. Allison Fleece?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members of the public. Tonight with us, we have Michelle Gallagher's sister and mother, who would like to say a few words, so I would like them to come to the podium and speak on her behalf.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Denise Smith. I am Michelle Gallagher's sister. Just wanted to say a few things. I think this will be our second contribution to the city from the work that we've been doing for Michelle, or with, for Michelle, kind of for Michelle, but it's something that we've been wanting to do for her since she passed in 2014. So for those of you who don't know, Michelle, she loved the Florence community. She always embraced the small-town feel and never really wanted to venture away from this community. She contributed to her community as a Little League coach for 10 years and was also an employee of the Penalt County Sheriff's Office for 18 years. Michelle's real passion was kids. She truly had a big heart for kids, all kids, but even a bigger heart for those kids who didn't have much. It was often that Michelle would use her own financial resources to make sure kids had what they needed to have the opportunities in the community here in Florence. And I'm sure that we don't know even half of what Michelle did to help the kids, but what we do know is that what we're doing now to raise money for kids is that something that she really wanted, would have wanted us to do. She never really wanted kids to go without. So a few years ago, we became a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We're now officially the Michelle Gallagher Memorial Foundation Incorporated. Today, we ask that the Florence City Council accept a $2,000 donation that will go directly to serve kids in this community. Kids who have the desire to participate in city functions but do not have the financial means to do so. And last, what I want to say is, I want to express our appreciation to the city. We've been doing this tournament for, this was our sixth year this past March. It would have been the eighth, but with COVID, we couldn't have it for two years. But I just do really want to express our appreciation to the city staff who work really closely with us during the preparation of the fields and really have helped us make this softball tournament success. We really couldn't do it without your staff, so thank you very much.
I'd like to say thank you very much. Michelle is... Michelle is always going to be remembered in our community, and what you, your family, are doing in partnership with community members to keep that alive, it's a blessing, and it's just amazing. So I know that you do a lot with the school district as well. You continue to reach out and give to the youth in the community. I remember Michelle from Little League, and she always worked so hard, and the kids on her team loved her so much. So she still lives on forever. Thank you. Item B is our public hearing on Resolution Number 183022, and for discussion, approval, disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penalt County, Arizona, approving the conditional use permit for McCritchy Storage Ventures LLC for portions of Assessor parcel numbers 21102-0268 and 21102-001R located at the northwest corner of Merrill Ranch Parkway and North Hunt Highway in Florence, Arizona, 85132. At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Maricela Benitez.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Today, we are here to present the conditional use permit for a recreational vehicle storage facility with shade canopies. This area is the northwest corner of Hunt Highway and Merrill Ranch Parkway. It is set back approximately 300 feet from the Hunt Highway area, but it also touches on Merrill Ranch Parkway. This area is zoned as highway business commercial, also known as B2 within our code. This is a conceptual plan of what the developer was looking to do in, with compliance with the owner. This piece of land is looking to be bought by the applicant. It is currently in the process of being purchased, and that is based on whether this conditional use is approved or not. The use that's being asked for is an RV storage facility. The site itself is 16.91 acres. It's intended to be developed within one or two phases. Now, all these storage facility spaces will be covered. The first phase will be covered, and then when they look to go on to the next second phase, those will also be covered before being leased out. They're looking at about approximately 707 RV storages with varying depths for the people who rent them out. Now, the site will have one primary point of access, and that is from Merrill Ranch Parkway. They also include two other emergency access gates, which will be provided in the Hunt Highway section. Looking at the site plan, we have the two emergency accesses coming from these areas to the east of the site, and then the frontage will be down here onto Merrill Ranch Parkway. And then the frontage will be down here onto Merrill Ranch Parkway. Now, they also are looking to include a 400-square-foot temporary office building. This building will be there until all the lots are fully rented out. The office building remain on-site, as said before, capacity. But also near that site will be an RV wash station and dump station. Now, these stations will only be used by renters who rent from this facility. It will not be used from people who do not rent from that facility. The office hours for the building will be from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. And those who rent from this facility will have keypad access to the front gate located at the entrance on Merrill Ranch Parkway. Now, looking at the zoning from around this area, we see that across immediately to the east is the Safeway Plaza that is also zoned B2 highway business commercial, but that is within the Anthem PUD. The plot of land we are looking at is not within the Anthem PUD. We did find that it was removed from the PUD in a 2007 and 2008 amendment. Also, to the immediately south and to the southeast corner, these are also zoned for highway business commercial. Around it, to the north and to the west immediately, we do have residential areas for Anthem. And also to, if you're looking a little bit further to the west, there are some more residential areas. The storage facility will not front Hunt Highway. Staff also found that it is set back from that highway in order to ensure that future commercial development can take place in the site that sits in front of the storage facility. The Town Development Code and Anthem at Merrill Ranch HOA codes do not allow on-street storage for RVs within Anthem community. Thus, the applicant saw an initial demand for this. The use will be contained within that area. It may be open-air, but it will be surrounded by a 10-foot wall, and it'll also be landscaped in front of that wall. So it'll be contained and screened within that property. Now, the Planning and Zoning Commission did forward a recommendation of denial of the conditional use permit. This meeting took place on May 19th. Now, the, if the council is looking to, for the conditions, we do have them set in the staff report. There are additional conditions that were also asked for by the applicants and the representatives. And they are included in here, which includes the 10-foot masonry wall be set there. The canopies adjacent to the perimeter wall will have an OPAC vertical element to kind of shield those sides that are right next to the barrier. And then it also includes a condition about landscaping. Now, staff is fully here in order to answer any questions that the commission, the council has. We also have our representatives here to answer, or they will do a presentation first, but they will also be available for questions. With that, my presentation is complete.
All right. Thank you very much. Mayor, at this time, we would ask the applicant to come up and do their presentation prior to the public hearing. No, I understand that. I was just actually going through and I was rereading. I'll go ahead and call up the applicant. I was trying to determine an order, so I'll go with that first. And then I'm going to open up the public hearing, so that way our public can also speak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For your record, my name is Taylor Earl with the law firm of Earl &amp; Curly. Our address is 3101 North Central Avenue in Phoenix. I appreciate being able to present tonight. This project, and we'll go through some details, I appreciate Maricela providing some details as well, but we originally proposed this project trying to bring quality investment. And we believe that we've gone through the public hearing process and with community feedback and made changes to the project to increase its compatibility in terms of the screening and the things that, the stipulations that we've asked for. McCritchie, who we represent, is a national developer that is looking to bring high-quality development. I'm part of a firm that we've been doing this since 1991. I'm a second-generation zoning attorney, and we pride ourselves in being able to bring quality and try to find compromise. We know we can't please everybody all of the time, and so what we try to do is, is bring something that we think will benefit a community and try to make changes where we can to increase compatibility. So, as Maricela mentioned, we are taking the land that is the inferior commercial land that is behind the frontage. That frontage is really important. And so what we're taking is the land that's much harder to process from a sales perspective and commercial because it doesn't have the commercial frontage, it doesn't have the visibility. And so that's why it works for RV storage, because we don't necessarily need to have the access that a coffee shop might have where it needs to have the visibility. People can drop in and out. And yet, having it along Hunt Highway is also important. So it's within a close distance to a major roadway, but it doesn't necessarily need to have that frontage. And so, we just want to make this clear. We'll come back to this principle. We want to be clear that what we're doing is facilitating the development of that front portion because we are taking these, these commercial properties that are too big, actually that's harder to develop. Because if a commercial developer comes in and says, "Well, I want 70% of the commercial depth," then the seller says, "Well, I've stuck with 30%. What do I do with that?" So by basically taking out the more difficult portion, you facilitate the sale of the front portion. And this is, this is a pattern that you see elsewhere in the valley where commercial parcels that are too big can sit. But if you can reshape them into the size that, that works for the area, then it can make it, you can actually facilitate development moving forward. So, what is being proposed? And Marcel covered this, but we are doing a high-end facility, meaning that we're doing a Class A. So, we know that there's some facilities that may be shaped a little bit, maybe at a different level. But McCritchie is well-backed, well-funded, and this is the type of product that they want to deliver here. So there's a focus from McCritchie to focus on delivering these high-quality facilities in markets where there is a demand. And we can show that we've done that research, that there is a heavy demand for this type of use in the area. And here's a photograph of another facility that they have done. So, a lot of times when we think about RV storage, sometimes you may think about a facility like this, which is, which is fine, but it's at, it's at a different tier. It's designed to, to be at a different market. So where you have, you know, dirt and you don't have the landscaping around the site. And so, again, what we're providing is, is different. Where we're providing paving, we have canopies, we have the landscaping around the site, we have a 10-foot wall that we've introduced. And so, again, this is at a different level of quality that we think meets a demand that's in the area. And obviously, people spend a lot on their RVs. We also have storage space in our facility for trailers, for boats. As people invest quite a bit in these, they're willing to pay a premium to have them be covered from the, you know, our, our major element here in Arizona is the sun. And obviously, that can cause a lot of damage to these facility, to these types of, you know, vehicles. So, providing an opportunity for people to have that higher level, people are willing to settle, to pay for that quality. So we have some renderings that we produced after we had our initial community meeting as, as there was concern expressed and part of that. What we tried to do is produce renderings that would both show what we were intending and then also we reworked some of the design in order to enhance the design. And so what you see here is a view that's looking towards the northeast and again, shows the commercial retail development that would be between us and Hunt Highway. Also shows the canopies. You see up here on the south side or closer to the bottom of the screen, a double row of trees. And so you'll see the way the stipulations were, where we have a double row of trees where they're offset. So effectively, you're getting a tree every 15 feet. It talks about two rows, 30 feet on center, but they're staggered. And this is what that's referring to, so that the trees are offset. So you're getting a good, you're basically visual obstruction. And we have one on kind of each side of the fence. Now, this is a view that's looking, if I were Hunt Highway, kind of looking west. Again, it shows, I think, the, the depth of commercial land that is still going to be retained there in front. Now, also just want to provide some clarity to something that was mentioned earlier, and I think, you know, we, 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 it's a, we'll take the blame on not being super clear earlier, so not on Maricela, on us, but this would be the Phase 2 canopy area. What this does is it allows us to have canopies around the edges in our initial phase. And then in the interim, we would be able to, we would want to be able to lease these areas to have revenue coming in. But basically, as that market absorbs those canopies, then we come in and put in that $1.5 million investment, give or take, of the steel to go into the Phase 2 and to have those canopies. So from an investment perspective, we're looking just to make sure that the market absorbs everything, like we believe that it will, and we have those being leased in the meantime. And then our Phase 2, we come in and we would want to add canopies. Our intention is for the whole thing to be, to have canopies, but we do it just like a home builder would build in phases. That would be our concept. So again, here's a view of that, similar on that south side of Merrill Ranch. We heard from the neighbors that that was important to have that, how the aesthetic nice off of there. And so, that's what we've done here with the trees. We increased the wall from six feet to 10 feet, both from a security and an aesthetics point of view. This is a similar off of Merrill Ranch. There's a building, as Maricela mentioned, that would be a building that would be there during the lease-up period, and then ultimately, that building would, would be removed. And we also have the gate there that we also had to be opaque in order to make that, again, we're having a visual obstruction so that you're not, you're not seeing through, you're not seeing through the gate area. So that's part of the aesthetics on the perimeter. Now, one of the questions that comes up is, is what we heard also through the Planning and Zoning Commission, including from a commissioner that, that voted against us, there was this, her opinion was expressed that, hey, this is a use that we want, but not sure in this location. So we thought we'd provide some information on why this particular location. And number one is that, as I mentioned, we did the market research. So there is a heavy, heavy demand that we believe can be satisfied by this, this use at this location. So our estimate is there are 6,600 RVs within 15 miles, yet only 700 RV spaces that are within that. So there is quite a significant amount of demand that can be met by this facility. And over the time, you can see the popularity of RVs has increased and the point of 2020 being a big increase, it's pandemic, people wanted to get outside, and so people have purchased these vehicles. So there's a lot of families that are using these. And then as Maricela mentioned, there's a restriction in HOAs in order to have these. So you have to have someplace to, to put these vehicles. Our research shows that within 30 miles, there are little to no RV storage vacancies. So if you were to contact those facilities within that range, you would find that they're either at complete capacity, no vacancy, or have very, very little capacity. So, much of the original neighborhood in the immediate area, they're not built with RV gates, meaning that there's not an opportunity to park them on those sites. There was also some, some history here that the, the church at Arizona Farms was allowing for RV storage, but it was not in conformance with their zoning, so that's been shut down. And so again, some of those folks that are looking for a place, we've heard that from, I believe, both staff and the community. And as I mentioned, Hunt Highway is a main arterial Florence, and so while we don't need to necessarily have the frontage, you know, having us tucked away in some corner of, of the city doesn't work quite as well. It's, it's important to be near that high-capacity corridor. And in terms of the commercial zoning, so, so B2 is a more intense zoning district. Again, that's what this is already zoned, so I would just highlight that this is not B1. It's not the neighborhood business. This is intended to be highway business, which is a specific, you know, zoning district that the city, the town has put onto this particular property. So, one of the, again, one of the questions is, is what about an industrial location? Well, the challenge with any type of industrial location is that the, the, what could be per, with the price that could be paid by an industrial user for that type of land is far more than could be paid for this type of use. So just practically speaking, when we look at somebody going to sell an industrial land that's, we could bring in manufacturing or warehousing, that just has a completely different price point. So it just boots-meet-the-ground, practical purposes. It's not, it's not likely that that, that's where that would occur. Again, also the street connections, and as I mentioned, this property works really well because it's difficult from, from the seller's perspective to make this a deep retail center, especially when you have Safeway already across the street with a, with that type of big center. But us taking the back portion, we're facilitating the front development. So again, it's a property that works well for us, and it works well for the seller as where, as well. It's also, again, tucked away, and it creates a buffer. So, to the west of this subject site, there is residential that would be coming in in the future. So we, we become then a buffer use. Imagine if you were behind a large retail center where the trucks came in and unloaded and unloaded, there was dumpsters being picked up. That would be called the back-of-house of retail. That is not a great transition between that, right immediately over the wall is someone's residential home or right over into residential community. But our use is very quiet. The traffic is low, the usage is low, so it's a very quiet use that you have between a higher-activity roadway, a higher-activity retail center. And between that and residential, you have something like us, which is a really good quiet buffer use. The other thing, too, we just pulled this list today, this would be available properties that are being sold in the area, and most of these are residential. There's no industrial listed in this, and none of these would, as we saw, allow for this use by right. So, and when we look at the availability of land, we think that this not only works really well, but it, there's just not a, from a practical perspective, we want to just provide why this property. And as I mentioned, again, this is that, that retail that would be up in the front. This is a, again, a conceptual plan only. Just want to show is a conceptual that might be developed. The, the intention of the developer is to put, or the owner of that area is to put pad buildings up in that front space. And so, there was a support letter that was submitted, and I just want to highlight the blue, the purchase of this back area by the developer of the storage facility is helping to facilitate the sale of the pad buildings along Hunt Highway. Meaning that, again, you're taking away the more difficult piece in the back, and that makes it easier for them to go sell, again, that front portion. And because you already have a deep Safeway center, this is a type of development that we think would go there. Now, I just want to be clear, we had kind of put in our, our materials that, that those transactions might be contingent upon our sale. Let me just clarify that and make to be clear. Whether or not we go forward or not, those may still go forward, right? The seller had, had confirmed that, that we would, they were contingent, but just to be, you know, safe, what I could say is that those may still go forward, but what I can say is that we are certainly facilitating by taking out the back portion, allowing those to go forward, which is, again, one of the reasons this works really well from the seller, who, again, wants to bring some of those uses that we know the community is interested in seeing. And we certainly understand that, and again, these types of things would happen on that more visible frontage versus being tucked away in the back, which is a more difficult spot. One of the questions we got in the community meeting was, well, is there enough depth? Are you, are you leaving enough depth there? So that's about 319 feet. It's a point of comparison. Across the street, you have about 207 feet in those pad buildings. So yes, there's plenty of space that would be left. And just from a sense of kind of understanding what that looks like in practice, it would, this center right here is 310 feet. So the center I just showed you, our, our space at 319 feet, this type of space, this type of center would fit within that space. So we do think it's ample amount of area for pad buildings or for a center like this, still quite a bit. And imagine the RV storage facility being behind this. Imagine how much, essentially, you're blocking a lot of that visibility of what you would see behind that frontage through landscaping and building and things. We would be tucked away, again, more difficult to see off of the highway. And this is some of the uses that are within this particular center, just to give you a sense of what can go. Also, just noting that there is quite a bit of commercial in this area, and commercial follows rooftops, which, again, the town is moving towards, but there's still a lot of, a lot of commercial development opportunities in this, even by having us utilize this back portion. And in today's market where you have Amazon taking a lot of the, the commercial space and, you know, essentially, we don't need quite as much because we have online deliveries and things of that nature, these retail developers essentially have kind of pick of the litter a lot of times because there's just not a lot of retail development that's happening really, and we do work all over the valley. And so what I can say is that because they can kind of pick where they want to go, they're likely to pick, again, the premium land that's right, that has good visibility, right off, has quick access for their customers. In terms of the, this facility, we just note that from a revenue perspective, at full lease-up, as we fully built the site out, we would expect to be 1.5 to 2.1 million dollars per year is what the revenue on the site would be. We don't think that the vacant commercial land really moves Florence forward for a variety of reasons. One is that it certainly, as you bring, if you were to bring retail in the front and have that vacant in the back, now you, you have people around the site, but you have no security in that interim area between the residential and the retail. So it can create security concerns by having vacant property. It also is, it, it doesn't look attractive. It can lead to blight and dumping, and we don't think that that increases value. And we don't think that that increases values. Also, from a secondary economic perspective, think about, not only are we bringing people to our site in their leasing, which has a tax revenue benefit to the, to the town, but also there's secondary benefits here. So as people come to start a vacation with their RV, they would be gassing up in, in Florence, tax revenue. They would be purchasing groceries for their trip, tax revenue. They would be looking at picking up food on their way out of town. And so as you maybe are pulling people from other places, they are all now coming and spending money here and, and generating revenue. You know, these types of RVs can be 100 to 150 gallons. And of course, today, and even in old gas prices, that's a fairly significant amount of money. Could be in the five, five to $800 range, just in gasoline and then groceries on top of that. The other sort of secondary benefit here is that, as I mentioned, retail developers are looking for housing density. They're looking for disposable income. When they do run their metrics, they don't just pick a piece of dirt, they look at all those financial considerations. And so by having RVs, you have, it's a service that attracts residents with disposable income. And then that then attracts future retailers. So you're providing for a community asset and community service that is a benefit to these retailers as they come in, because now you're attracting people who have those types of incomes and that disposable income. And also, Pulte is the master developer of this area, believes that this use will be attractive to the residents of Anthem. And again, they're looking at it from they want to be able to attract people here in the short term and long term as well. And again, investment attracts more investment. This is about a $10 million investment, perhaps more than that. And as we come in at a high quality of what we are, we think that that also helps to attract other investment that can make them in other types of development that may come in after that. It sort of sets a, a mark that, hey, this is an area that's worth investing in. And so it sends signals to the development community that allows that to, to attract more after that. Again, just want to note through what B2 allows. These are some of the, these are the uses that would be allowed in B2 without any type of public hearing, just to give a sense of what B2 allows for. And so we can go through and, and talk about some of these. But again, B2 is a more contented commercial zoning. All of these would be permitted with, without any type of public hearing. You know, warehousing, light, manufacturing could go into this, this spot. That obviously would have a lot of traffic and truck traffic and that nature. Auto repair is permitted in B2. Funny enough, RV sales is permitted by right. And you can imagine that while we're trying to keep a low prop, we don't need to have lights and we don't need to have everybody see what's going on, this would kind of be the opposite. The idea would be to have visibility. You want people attracted, you want people seeing it. And so interestingly enough, and I would just sort of note that in the CUP process, you know, why would this be permitted by right in the RV storage? I think it's because sometimes RV storage cannot be done to high quality. And we think we've addressed that with the stipulations that we've noted. And here's another one here. So also from a traffic perspective, we want to just kind of do a comparison here and show, so RV storage, these are based on ITE codes, which are national averages. Be looking at about 128 trips on a daily basis. If this were to go as a commercial shopping center, you'd be looking at about, you know, just under 7,000 trips. So there's a significant traffic difference. And we know that some of the concern from the community is that type of activity near the residential community. We are a, a mere fraction of the type of traffic that would be generated if this were to be, if our section of that land were to be done in a commercial manner. And so again, we think that we have, we've provided a nice aesthetic to this facility. And one of the things that came up to was security. That's why we went for the 10-foot walls around the entire site. As I mentioned, there's keypads with unique codes, meaning that we would know who came in, when you came in, we'd be able to track you the whole time you were there. We've limited the gate access hours. This was in, in response to the community as we had those conversations, cameras that would be on the site. And there was a concern about people might live in their RV. Well, we don't have power hookups except for just enough to keep the battery alive. So we just wanted to make that kind of clear. One of the screening elements that was mentioned earlier can be seen here. So on the perimeter, we have the canopies, we would have this vertical portion that would come down to meet the top of the wall. That's one of those stipulations. So as you see, for example, if you were to look here on the perimeters, not only would you have the commercial, which would provide really visual obstruction to anybody viewing the site over, you know, from Hunt Highway over the commercial section, but we also have these, the things that would drop down in order to provide even better shielding. And again, that's part of the stipulations. Just real quickly, we want to talk about the posture. Again, to be clear, this is not a rezoning action. We're not rezoning from B2. The site has B2 zoning today. What we're asking for is a conditional use permit, which looks at slightly different things than a zoning case might look at. So this is the language within the code, and I'll just highlight a few things here. Says, because there are some uses which may be beneficial to have within certain zones, because these uses may not be compatible, it goes into that's what's being looked at if you kind of come down here to the bottom, to make it more harmonious and compatible with adjoining and nearby uses. So a CUP looks at compatibility of the specific site and the specific use and the specific parameters of that use, rather than looking at it from a zoning perspective where we might be looking at, you know, highest and best use and things of that nature. So if you can meet the CUP requirements, again, it's already something that's permitted within the zoning, but we just want a second sort of bite at the apple to make sure that we're not putting in a use that's incompatible at that specific location. And so that's why we focused on the compatibility measures that we, we talked about. Again, this is, again, part of the code that talks about the things that are to be considered. Again, they go to this idea of compatibility, access, things of that nature. And again, these are the things, sort of list them all together, the things that we've done to provide that type of compatibility. Some details of the site plan, again, Marcella went over this, I won't spend a lot of time. Happy to come back, but just some details of, of kind of where things are, retention in the middle. The dump station actually is a little further in, kind of in this area here. And we know there'd been a concern about, to you about the dump stations. We asked one of our managers, been doing this for 20 years, never had a one time where that, where, you know, somebody dumped and didn't make it into, into the pit. In other words, didn't make it into, actually funneling it into the sewer system. And so we don't really see that. We, we understand the concern, but based on experience, don't think it'll be an issue. And as I mentioned, quiet, these are very quiet uses, and they don't have people coming in, you know, all times. As you mentioned, that trip count, people leave their RVs and they leave them for significant periods of time. And so as you talk about a buffer from this activity to what's behind us, we think it's a very compelling. Now, we know there's people concerned, and I'm sure you'll hear from them tonight, but we did just want to be respectful of those who had indicated to us some support for it and, and want to make sure their opinions are also heard. And I'll just put these on to the record, Mayor, quickly. I'm very supportive of this facility being built. Finding storage is very challenging. The proposal looks to be very professional. I feel there's no merit in not allowing this business to move forward. I think this is great use of the land, as long as the walls are 10 feet and there's substantial plantings that are maintained regularly, then I'm all for this project. And someone had said, I'm really bummed out that the Florence Planning and Zoning did not recommend this business. And so again, I think we, what we've heard is that there, there is support. There are folks who, who see this as a, as a use that's needed in the community, and we, we saw some appreciation for the changes that we had made. And at the end of the day, this use is really a community-based use. This, this works with families who, who have, you know, opportunities. You can think every time that RV is taken out, those are family memories that are, that are being created. And so we think this is part of a, of a growing community. We think this is the type of use that supports an inclusive environment for, for families to be a part of. We think that we have done what we can to address the concerns that we heard from the community. And we think that by taking the more difficult commercial land, it's going to facilitate development of the front. It's going to be a community asset that we think the members of the community will use both now and as, as Florence continues to grow. So with that, Mayor, happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, do you have questions? Or would you like me to proceed with opening the public hearing at this time to hear from our community first? Okay, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing, so that way if there's questions that we're hearing, we will then ask you. I do have several requests to speak, so officially, I'm opening up the public hearing. If you are watching this online, if you could please go ahead and click that hand raising, so that way we can know that you would like to speak, and we will acknowledge and call you forward. Our first speaker is Ms. Johnson. I want to make sure that I pronounce your first name correctly, so I apologize.
Hi. Hi, I'm Jenellee Johnson, and I reside at 6301 West Yorktown Way in Florence. And I don't think that this is the best use of the land. I think that larger development areas of land, such as this for commercial use, can be used for other purposes other than a storage facility. I think that it's not limited to what we choose now, but it's how we look at what we want to do in the future with our town. I think that, you know, right now, we are in a pivotal time on how we choose to develop Florence. Right now, if we look at our city, we have a lot of open land in Florence. I think that that land would be better used as preschools, daycare, elder care in this community. We have a lot of aging populations, especially with Sun City. I'm on the Park side, but aging into the Sun City side very shortly, probably. And I also have an aging mother. Elder care would be great for me. It would probably be great to have daycare for younger families. And that space would be ideal for that type of situation. That would probably accommodate that whole space. So I think limiting to a storage facility is not realistic necessarily for a big plot of land. I think we can easily fill it and not need it to be on public, you know, on a big highway. We wouldn't want that on a big highway. So I don't think we need to limit ourselves in that manner. And again, this goes back to zoning. We need to look at, how do we want to zone Florence? How can we zone Florence to make us more attractive for the future of Florence and to attract more people into Florence? You know, and put us on the map as someplace to be more desirable. I think that we have this opportunity. We need to choose wisely, even as it was mentioned with the ecosystem, where we want to put places in our town and in our community is very pivotal right now. We need to take these, you know, placements of these businesses very seriously. So that is what I would like to bring to the forefront. And the investment of this property, you know, how much a first storage unit is willing to pay for the land, that's not our issue. Not our problem. We've got 99 problems. What they want to pay is not one of our problems. We can find other businesses to pay for that. So I think that's Beyonce, maybe. But anyways, I think my time's up, and that's all I wanted to say, is I think we can utilize our land better. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Mr. Jay Aures? And if I pronounced your name, I might have said it incorrectly. It's A-U-F-E-R-S? Okay. I apologize if I say any names incorrectly.
It's no problem, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman. I'm rising to object to the storage facility. I live in Anthem. There are families there, there's a, I'm in the retirement side, but there's a lot of families, kids, that need either jobs or things to do. And the storage facility isn't going to meet those needs. So that's basically it.
Thank you, sir. Les Buckner?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name's Les Buckner. I'm at 7812 West Willow Way in Florence. And I wanted to start by saying that I did attend the, the two meetings of the Planning Commission. And I would say there was standing room only. And so there were a lot of people that spoke. There was a great sentiment, not in support of the conditional use permit. And I would say that the, tonight, there aren't as many people here because at the end of that last Planning Commission meeting, when it was voted as a denial on, for the Planning Commission, I think a lot of people believed it was a done deal. Okay? So what I would say is that step back, take a look at the community. You're in the middle of a residential community, growing residential community. We have needs in the community for more retail, more shopping center type of development. The proponent representative suggests that, oh, well, building that facility would make it easier to market and develop the remaining land on the, on the highway front. However, we don't need more fast food. What we would like to see is we would like something that serves the greater need of the community. We need more shopping. If you've been into the Safeway, you'll see it's one of the smallest footprint Safeways you'll see. And so there's really very little out there right now. And the long-term plan, the, the general plan, envisions that limited amount of commercial space out there, and there really isn't that much, would be to serve the greater needs of the community. Approving the development of the RV storage would serve a very small fraction of our local community. So it would really not be the best use, nor would it really be compatible in that it's right in the middle of a residential community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Christina? With two last names.
How are you today, ma'am?
I'm Friday Bushytail, thank you. I'm just going to follow the suit of my husband. I'm Christina Corielli Buckner. I live at 7812 West Willow Way. My husband and I came from California. I would like to say we escaped California. And today is our one-year anniversary moving to Arizona, specifically Florence. So there are a lot of things that attracted us to the Florence area, but had we ever, ever known or suspected that an RV storage on Hunt Highway or off the Felix Road would ever be an option in this area, we honestly, we would have never have moved here. So because we're a little naive to the storage capacity, we actually went out and did a drive, we drove around the area, Casa Grande, Eloy, gosh, Coolidge, Mesa, Apache Junction, Phoenix, looking at other storage facilities, just to sort of get a sense that are we just being kind of thick-headed? There is a one facility that we saw, no, no matter how much cosmetics you did to the facility, it still looked like an RV storage facility. But I think the bigger issue that my husband kind of addressed is really the reality is, it doesn't meet the immediate needs of the community in which we live in. And, and what we need is, is we're, we're in a corridor. We're in a corridor where we have growing, emerging families, growing families. We have production of homes that are being built. We need things that are really sustainable, which is retail, drugstores, medical facilities. An RV facility serves a very, very small population of people. Yes, do we need them? Yeah, we probably do, need storage facilities. But not in the middle of a high-density community in which we all live, whether it's senior living or it's emerging families. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jay Curl?
Hello. I'm Jay Curl. I live at 4416 North Spyglass Drive in Florence. And I'm in agreement for the RV storage. I own an RV, and we've been here three years. And it was a hardship finding a spot, especially with cover. You have no idea what the damage the sun does. If you don't have cover, it doesn't last long. Plus, I have to go to Coolidge now, and many people have to drive 20 to 25 miles just to find a spot. And the waiting lists are long. And as far as the, my biggest concern was what it's going to look like. And I feel that they've done, they've went out of their way with the 10-foot wall, with all the landscaping, and with the upfront stores on Hunt, you won't see it. I believe it'll be nice-looking, it'll be up, it'll be kept up, it better be. The, let's see, where am I at here? And I don't really see a problem with this. I, I'm an RV guy, and I think it's wonderful. And there's many people here that agree with me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jeffrey Cohen?
I'm Jeff Cohen. I live at 8562 West Candlewood Way, Florence. Mayor Walter, councilmembers. I thought the presentation that they did was fine. It took... It took in a lot of the concerns of the community from postings they've seen online and everything else. What, we have a get-together of about 12 to 24 people every Friday night. I don't know a single neighbor that approves this facility. Every Friday night, this is a big point of discussion amongst our neighbors. It affects our community. When you go and you turn in towards the, the site across from us, you have a nice waterfall, that's your impression of the community. Ours is going to be an RV storage facility. I understand they want to make it aesthetically pleasing, and, but what we don't know is we don't know the material that they're going to use to make it aesthetically pleasing. We don't know how good of neighbors they're going to be, how well they're going to upkeep this property. As we've seen in the D.R. Horton community, that we have a lot of public land, or it's community land that's not being maintained. It doesn't look good. And our front gate and our front view is going to be this facility. We don't know how good of neighbors they are in other communities, what kind of problems they bring, how good they've been at making promises to those towns and communities and keeping them. So that's some of the concerns that me and my neighbors have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Royal Deland. I live at 2326 North Kaminsky Drive. That's in the Sycamore neighborhood, directly across the street from where they want to build RV storage. And we are part of Anthem at Merrill Park. Okay? Now, the applicant focused a lot about Hunt Highway. Forget Hunt Highway, 300 foot setback, who cares? I want to talk about Merrill Ranch Parkway, the entrance to our community. Beautiful landscaped meridian, setbacks, even the Circle K you allowed, you set back 100 feet. The applicant is asking for 30 feet. There's already a wide pathway there that curves away from the road. If you look at their pictures, and I wish we could pick them up, I believe they're distorted, 30 feet is less than from me to you. Can you get palm trees and all that in 30 feet? I don't think so. I'd also like you to get the picture back up when you discuss of the entrance. It shows the entrance. What they didn't show you is how does an RV exit the RV storage? There is only, there's three ways. Turn right and U-turn at the end at Camden. Two, cut through my neighborhood about 12 blocks and exit out on Hunt Highway at Ripken Way. Or take out the rest of the center of the landscaped meridian that you took out 250 feet of for the entrance to the Circle K. That's going to take out the entire rest of our meridian, and that's the entrance to our community. Now, one further point, there's 10 homes that have a direct line to the RV storage. They are all under construction and have been on a long, delayed construction. They are not finished, been under construction a long time. Those people should have an input on RV storage because they're going to be directly in the sightline. Now, why does that matter? The first occupied house in Sycamore is the D.R. Horton model when you first turn on Camden. It just sold two months ago. Those people, and it is in the sightline, those people, the owners paid $418,000 for that home. Does anybody think they want an RV storage unit in their sightline? I think not. Please vote to deny.
Thank you, sir.
Projects never look like pretty pictures, and a cyclone fence, quite frankly, is not a high-quality project. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kathy DeRosa. I reside at 7737 West Noble Prairie Drive. Florence is at a major crossroad with current planning efforts, and any plan should be viewed as, it's only the beginning, of a series of actions that the town will need to take to implement its goals, objectives, strategies for the town of Florence. Your general plan speaks to how to best use, to how to best position Florence in the future. The general plan is the town's primary tool for guiding the community's future. It represents a policy direction and serves as a handbook. Florence stands at the crossroads between its past and its future. With extensive development projected in coming years, the community seeks a sustainable future that honors its past as well as growth into the future. These words come from your general plan. There are four types of community needs: perceived needs, expressed needs, absolute needs, and relative needs. Perceived needs are for individuals who are what-in-afirming. Expressed needs, wouldn't we all like a new steakhouse here in town? An absolute need is another story. We are a very underserved community here in Florence, and once land is entitled, it is gone forever. We are giving up land to accommodate what originally was 630 spaces, now I hear tonight it's 707 owners, at the cost of over 16,000-plus residents of Florence. 6,000 of us live right across the street from the project. What is the relative need of this project and the value to the community when we are in need of so many services to meet our everyday needs? The town of Florence being underserved has limited commercial space in the new section of town. I ask you, is storage for RV vehicles and other toys the highest and best use of prime commercial property in this area? How does this project fit into the vision for, that council has for the future of Florence? Is this the legacy you want to leave for the future, when this land can be used to fill real needs of the community and not just serve, whether it be 630 or 707 people who may not even live here? Your general plan speaks of smart-growth principles. How does this project address those principles? Does RV storage accomplish any of the smart-growth principles that you have set forward?
I apologize.
Thank you. Yes, I know. My time is up, and I do appreciate your letting me finish at least that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I also see a Mr. Howard Bias online. If we could go ahead and open him up to speak.
Good evening, Council. I'd just like to say that I'm in tow of disagreement of this large complex being placed in a residential area. My concern is that it is being placed in the area where children are, and there is a consideration that I thought was not presented by the person representing the RV plant, was that the crime, statistical data that may be bringing into our neighborhoods in this venture that's being started. I think we need more commercial. We need health, medical offices, stores, it'll bring in vendors for our community, not a large complex with lipstick on a pig. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else?
Oops. Okay. Can y'all hear me?
We can hear you, ma'am. How are you?
Good. And I'm not sure if I'm having a high end, but yeah, I'm opposed to that project also. I think that there is plenty of other space to put a facility like that. The community is in need of, you know, a lot more other things than just an RV storage. And I agree. I think that if something like that was put there, that the majority of the people that would use that facility probably wouldn't even live here, so it wouldn't serve the community to the fullest. And I applaud all those that are there and that have been going to the P&amp;Z meetings to be there and speak out and be a voice for your community. And I also highly urge you guys to continue to keep going to these planning and zoning meetings and keep packing the house for these city council meetings to be a voice. If we want change and we want things to happen the way we think is best for our community, we have to keep going and being heard and being present and speak up for ourselves in what we feel is going to be best for our community as a whole. And that's all I have to say. So thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. I appreciate you taking the time to tune in and communicate.
Yes, thank you, guys.
I do not see anybody else online with their hand raised at this time, but I do see an attendee, oh, nope, it's okay. Thank you. I was handed one more, so I apologize. Mr. Brian Shipman?
Hi, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Brian Shipman, and I live on Petersburg Drive in Anthem. So it does affect us somewhat. Anthem is, in our area, one of the higher-end developments, and a new development, being built and very rapidly and everything. Matter of fact, as we drive into it, we have waterfalls, we have lights, we have flags, trees, everything, to make it look beautiful. I have no problem with having an RV storage lot. However, I think the location of it should be someplace else. There are places all over us, within a mile or less of where we are. We're talking about a high-end store, RV lot is what the man says. I just don't think that we're going to have 707 $1 million motorhomes parked in a parking lot. I challenge each one of you to drive by any of the storage lots that are within 10 miles to 7 miles of where we are right now and look at them. You don't just store high-end motorhomes there. You store boats that don't run, cars that don't run, backs of trucks, things like that. There's nothing that has been said that identifies anything different than that being in here. So if you go down Arizona Farm Road, the church there has had a drawback in that they cannot, they can no longer store outside motorhomes or anything. The only thing that they can store is under a Ramada and within the building, and they are doing that. Just right next door to it is a place with hundreds of storage lots, us storage locations. Take a look at it and see what, and see what it looks like. This is prime business location. We've got 17 acres of prime business land here. And the gentleman, I've been to all the meetings that he's had, right from the first one, and he's made a lot of progress, and he's added a number of things that were objectionable to begin with. But we still, to the best of my knowledge, we have no permanent structure that is going to be built here. 17 acres of, if you had any retail location where they built a building, this goes on our tax rolls. This is not town property. This is not state property. It's not county property. This is stuff that we get to collect taxes for. We're only looking at putting in, yeah, we're only looking at putting in a temporary building. I think there's a better use for that property. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd also like to say thank you for your service. That is all the requests for speaking that I have before me. However, if you're in the audience and you would like to speak, if you could kindly raise your hand at this time, and we will call you forward.
Major and Councilmen, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bartholopez, and I live in Power Ranch, I mean Merrill Ranch. I do have a couple of concerns. This plan seems to be presented by the gentleman. It looks beautiful. It's a dream come true, according to them. However, unfortunately, you know, when I moved into this community a year and a half ago, I did not move in with a plan that my entrance would be a storage for RVs. I feel that I worked very hard, you know, to make ends meet and to pay taxes and to live in a community that I have a dream one day it's going to be beyond better than Gilbert and Queen Creek. However, if we're going to allocate such a huge amount of land for storage of RV, I think we're settling for nothing. I'm a visionary. I hope that all of you are visionaries, too. We have so much to offer to our children, to our youth. There's other businesses that should be in there in place of an RV. As many indicated, most of those family owners do not even live here. There's no birds. They don't even pay taxes here. They get out long enough not to have to pay taxes. We do. We live there, we stay there, we build a family, we take care of our community. One of my concerns is who's going to be supervising the wash and the dumpster station? If those things go wrong, who's going to run to take care of those areas? They talked about crime. I was a probation officer for 20 years. I know what crime is. I know areas that are hidden and where people come and hide to do what they think they can do best in hidden areas like that. My concern is the population and what we're bringing to that population. And I want a thriving town. I want a thriving city. I want a nourishment environment, and I don't think that an RV is nourishing anything good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Is there anybody else who has not had an opportunity to speak and wants to speak during this open time? Okay. Council, I'm going to...
Mayor, we have a hand raised online.
Oh, thank you so much.
We did.
I don't see the hand raised, so I'm glad that you did. If you raised your hand online and you would like to speak, can you raise it again, please? Okay. All right. So I appreciate first and foremost everybody who has taken the time to engage during the entire process, both at the level of planning and zoning, all the way up to and including this meeting here tonight where it's open for a public hearing and presentation. You'll notice that I did not close the public hearing portion. That's because after council speaks, if there's somebody from the public that wishes to further communicate, I want to make sure to leave that open line of communication open. I am a firm believer in communication and making sure that all voices are heard. Council, is there anybody who would like to begin? Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, I've got a couple of things. One, I think there is a different interpretation of the B2 zoning. If you read the B2 zoning, the only thing that's allowed there is mini-storage. This is certainly not a miniStorage. This is the biggest storage site I've ever seen, so it's not a miniStorage area. And second of all, our, what's it called here? The thing that we talked about, our conditional use permit, it talks about harmonious use. And we have heard here tonight from all of our residents, this is not what they want, so it's not harmonious. So that's my take on it.
Vice Mayor Cortez?
I'm just trying to acknowledge everybody in the order that I saw their hand motion go.
Okay. So I have a couple of questions for you, sir, and I'm sorry I caught your name, but I did not write it down, and I forget it as fast as you say it if I don't write it down. So what is the timeframe, because there's, it's going to be done in two phases, so what is the timeframe, and I'm sure it's in there and I missed it, of the completed project? what is the timeframe, and I'm sure it's in there and I missed it, of the completed project?
Do you want to speak to that?
Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor, this is Ben, who's also here with the developer. He has just a tighter grasp of the timelines of what they would expect, so to give you the most precise answer, it may be best to have him speak, if that's permissible.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for your time. My name is Ben Lockhorst. I live at 222 Riverfront Avenue, Calgary, Alberta. To address your question, the construction usually takes about eight to 10 months, so from the time we acquire to the time we're completed, call it maybe two years if we're assuming the two phases.
Okay. My second question is, have you evaluated how this will impact the home values in Anthem, especially those that will be directly against or within a buffer zone of it?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So, I don't have an economic study, but what I can say is this. This goes back to some of the things that we mentioned. If we look at what the baseline is, considering everything that would go, that could go into this spot by right, and look at what we are providing, so, storage, RV storage, self-storage, they are incredibly quiet and low-traffic, low uses. They also have the ability for us to secure this site in a way that we could not secure it if it were a retail center. Right? If it were a retail center, you would have open parking lots, you have most likely an open back area where people can walk. I probably could walk behind Safeway right now if I wanted to. You have open parking lots. We have a facility that has 10-foot walls with a lot of security cameras. We know who's coming in because they have to put in a unique PIN code to them, so there's a lot of security, a low amount of usage, and with the things that we're doing to screen, personally, I would much rather live next to this than I would to the back of a retail center, the back of a light manufacturing or warehousing center, the back of an RV sales facility. So, we look at what B2 is, is, and what I've heard some of the community members say that they would like to have, was 6,000-plus trips per day versus the 100 and, you know, under 200 that we're, that we're talking about. Personally, I think that this will, I would rather live next to this. I think that the values, in terms of what you're preserving next to, next to a community, particularly the people who aren't here yet, right, who are, who will be immediately adjacent to the west of the community. And so, I think, you know, zoning looks at this question of, you know, there's property rights, and, and we want people to be able to exercise property rights, but zoning comes on top of those property rights and says, yes, fair, but we can't just have somebody build a McDonald's, you know, in a community in the, you know, middle of a subdivision, for example, right? So, zoning comes in and says, yes, but, we're going to make sure that they're done in proper zones, right? And so, it's a balancing of property interests. We want people to be able to develop their land, so, somebody may put in a tenant that other people, oh, we don't need another, you know, Chick-fil-A. I'd much rather have a burger place, right? But that's not something that zoning looks at. It looks at balancing property rights. And so, that's why I mentioned in the CUP process, this isn't a rezone. It's simply looking at to make sure that there's compatibility from things like access and things like screening. And so, that's why I focus so much on those things. And so, I think what we're providing here, while it may not be what everybody in the community wants, we know that there's some members of the community that do want it, but we think that it's a fair use of the land and that we've mitigated those negative impacts, and so we think we're balancing the interest.
Okay. I got like two more. What is going to replace the temporary building?
So, that would be, yeah, so that would be a landscape area.
Okay. And then, my final question is going to be, what consideration have you given to how people are going to exit? I've been in RVs, I've owned them, and know many people that do. The last thing you want to do is try to flip a U-turn in one, and the last thing I or any resident want to see is a huge line of RVs. We all have RVs that come down our road. We have RVs that are parked on our streets. We have an RV that parks at the restaurant illegally. I mean, they're everywhere, so we're not going to deny that. So, that's my concern, is where are you going to have these RVs exit at so that they're not disturbing the neighbors and they're not putting people at risk by trying to flip a U-turn in the middle of a residential area?
Yes, thank you for the question. So, after this process, we would go into the site planning process where we vet all of the questions of ingress and egress. So, at this time, what we tried to do was avoid having RVs going through the commercial facility, right? And so, we have our access off of Merrill Ranch Parkway as our sort of preliminary design. But as we go through the site planning process, we would be looking at things like the access, the egress, and making sure that staff is signing off on that. And if that's something that we needed to work with the seller on in order to enable, as I said, right now, we have emergency access only through that center, but if that were something that were important to the site planning process, then we certainly go back to the seller and talk about having, you know, different types of access considered. It's not something that we have, I just want to be clear, but if that's something that in the site planning process, we'd certainly can, can have that conversation with the seller to make sure that it works for town staff, because they're the ones that are vetting these types of important issues with access.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Neal.
I wanted to ask, because honestly, I think the town has spoken, but I don't want to bash you because it seems like this would be a great facility. Have you looked anywhere else close?
Yep. In fact, this is something that I do want to speak to some of those efforts.
So, over the past, call it two or three years, we've been looking throughout the Phoenix market, in Florence as well. We've come across very few, if any, compatible land pieces that are fit for this use. As Taylor alluded to earlier in the, the presentation, there's that screenshot that showed all the currently available opportunities, so, of ten of your groups of more, thank you. So, from that standpoint, there are very few, if any, parcels that are available for this use. And so, the, the fact that more and more people are moving here and more and more people that are RVers are moving here, it only exacerbates the undersupply, we believe.
Have you came in and spoken with anyone about where there would be land available, or are you just looking for land where infrastructure is already set up?
So, at this point, we've only gone for the infrastructure that's set up, because as a developer, that's the easiest way to, to develop a piece of land. We, we have not cold-called or reached out to see if there's any prospective land parcels available at this point, no.
And Councilman, can I just clarify the question? When you say infrastructure, I'm not sure that, that, I want to make sure that we're responsive to your question.
What I mean is, I think the facility would be great around here. Honestly, not, just, just not where you want to put it. If you're looking for somewhere where, is it going to be too much for you guys? Or maybe we come in and talk to some people about where you can put it, where there is some infrastructure? I don't know all the places. I really don't. Like I'm saying, I think it's a great idea, just not where you want it. That's kind of what I'm telling you.
Understood. And, and I guess what I would say to that is that I think that this is, in my opinion, and that's why you're sitting up there and I'm down here, but I do think that this is a use that is valuable for, for both present and future residents of Florence. And so, the question is, we understand that there are residents in this area who, who would prefer to have some other type of use. They want us to develop commercial. Well, I think that in this area, there, you need a lot of rooftops to cover that much retail land, particularly since there is a Safeway. I think someone alluded to this smaller Safeway. And so, it isn't so easy as to say, well, let's go pick another, another property. Again, this one has characteristics that other things, other lands aren't going to have, which is that it has convenient access to a high-capacity corridor, right? It doesn't need to be on the frontage, but it's close enough, right? It is that back half of the property, so we aren't trying to compete with a land buyer that's coming and saying, well, I'll pay you X per feet because I'm in the front, right? So, we're taking inferior land, which is another reason why that works. We actually think that, you know, not just you say, well, we want to stick this in the corner somewhere, that actually it does provide a better buffer to residential, as opposed to saying, well, let's push up the retail right up against the residential or the other types of uses that are permitted. So, so while I understand that folks here are, that there's opposition that's been expressed, what I would say is that if it's somewhere that, that you see as being a valuable use in the town, I think this actually, this is a good location for it. It provides a buffer, and again, I know everybody doesn't agree with me, but it provides a buffer. It's in inferior land that's going to be hard to process. So, this, again, it does make it that more bite-sized piece up front. I'm involved in cases in my career where we've had these big commercial pieces that just sit, and they come to me 20 years after they're created or 30 years and say, hey, this ended up not working. We need to now convert it to something else, or we need to reshape it to a, to a size that actually works. So, this is effectively what that's doing, is it's taking that front 320 feet or 319 and making it where that's more, that's more developable at that size. And that's what that support statement said from the seller, who, again, shares your interest. They want to see that land developed. They want to bring commercial retail development. But they're also operating in the real world of rooftops and what actually can be viably sold with the type of density. And so, we're, we're attracting residents, we're attracting residents with disposable income, and there, that are families that want to come here and that would then invest in retail. So, you're bringing an amenity that attracts rooftops, that then attracts more retail developments, part of a, a development ecosystem.
So, just to recommunicate, Vice Mayor, I'm glad that you brought up the question about the exiting, and I'm not done. I'm definitely going to go down here, but I just want to segue, because I have different notes, but I just want to reaffirm what you also have. Because we heard from a Royal D Land earlier, and he had communicated, and very much so, where we're talking about, you know, cutting through the neighborhood or taking out the rest of the landscaped Meridian, and how that is their entrance to their community. People have purchased homes upwards to $500,000 in this community, which is a significant investment, and to not know that that is going to be a use, it's not zoned that way. I also wanted to partner off of what Councilmember Neal had mentioned in regards to looking at other sites, because I have looked around in other areas, and there are other areas, albeit they may not have the infrastructure, but there are areas that you could seek out that would be appropriate.
I was going back to the timeframes as far as your phases, and, and some of the stuff that I've read, it's, it looks like you have Phase 1 being the front half of your, your company, and then the back half is going to be Phase 2. Is that correct?
Councilman, through the, through the mayor, the proposal would be for our Phase 1 to be the, the canopies around the perimeter of the site. That provides us the opportunity to make sure that that, that screening that I talked about would be put in place on those perimeter canopies, and then it would be the, the portion in the middle that we would have be a Phase 2 canopy area.
Okay, so, the entire area would be completed all the way around it, and then you would do, on the inside is your phases, so, okay. As far as the, I think I'm going back to the ingress, egress, still don't understand whether that has been addressed or not. If someone wants to make a left turn out of your establishment from, off of Merrill Ranch, what is your plan for Merrill Ranch?
And, yeah, thank you. So, again, that's part of this. The reason that we don't have a definitive answer on that is because it goes through a technical review with the town, so we can't unilaterally decide to make the break in the median. That's something that has to be part of a town discussion with staff, with the traffic engineering staff, and that's part of that communication process. So, it's part of the back and forth. So, I can't stand here and tell you that, yes, I will break a, make a break in the median. What I, what I can say is that is part of that process, that we would be supportive of doing the work on that. I appreciate the concern that was expressed about. We want to keep that. But what I would also say is that if this were to go as a, as a retail center, I believe very strongly they would want to have a left out of that facility as well, and the trip count would be significantly higher. And then, if you were to say, well, they don't get a median break, then you're going to have under 7,000 trips just for our portion going down and doing U-turns as well. So, I think that if it's a median break that's going to be necessary, I would say that it would be necessary regardless of what use goes in there, and our traffic is substantially an under, again, under 200 trips a day versus just under 7,000 trips a day. And so, to not have a left out would be a problem for any development going into that facility.
Again, the last thing I want to say is that recently, we've decided to rebrand our entire town. We've changed our logo. We've changed our seal, all in efforts to change the image of the town. Forever Florence has been known as a prison town. To me, Florence is an old western town with a prison in it. 10-foot walls, almost 16 acres' worth of 10-foot walls? That, that almost kind of contradicts what we're trying to change here. So, I don't, I don't know if that kind of works for me, but, I don't know if there's really a question there. I just wanted to...
I'm happy to respond, but also, what I guess I would say to that is, I appreciate the point, but I think that by the landscaping that we're providing, the double row, the trees, I think it's a completely different aesthetic than just having a bare 10-foot wall. And I would also say that we're really looking at the Merrill Ranch side where we have those extra trees, and then really on the Hunt Highway side, you're going to be, again, over a football field away from Hunt Highway with a lot of commercial development intervening. I really don't think that people are likely to, to really see much behind that. And so, and we're, and so we've, we've softened it significantly by providing the security that the neighbors were concerned about, but also softening it in terms of its actual appearance.
Councilmember Hughes?
With the staggering of the, of the trees and a 10-foot wall, how, how have you encountered for the root system within 30 feet? How, how is that going to not tear the wall down? How are the trees going to grow? How have you...
So, that, we, that stipulation was also something that we discussed with staff, and what I would say is that it also depends on a few things with regard to how they, you know, pop walls or things like that. It's going to be a species selection. It's also going to be a watering schedule, so that you're not over-watering and forcing water to, you know, easily come up. You want to have things like deep watering so root systems go down, and then it's going to be a type of species selection so that we don't have species that have those types of problems. So, I do think that this is something that can work well. You know, having trees on either side of a wall, I think is a common, it's a common technique that's used both to just buffer, you know, landscape areas, or sorry, parking areas that may be behind the wall, but also screening that may be done outside of a wall.
You just have a very small footprint to put those in with the, with the wall and the, and the trees on both sides?
Right. You don't necessarily want to plant them so that they're touching the wall, right? You want to make sure that they're spaced away from the wall. But from the visual perspective, what's important is that we're doing them every 15 feet as you look this direction. And so, the fact that they may be a little separated away from the wall isn't necessarily going to be as, as harmful. So, yeah, you're right. We wouldn't want to plant them right up against the wall. You'd want to make sure that there's adequate spacing. We would use a landscape architect to make sure that we planted those correctly, of course.
And you're expecting them to be 30 feet tall? That's what I read in the...
No, ma'am. So, so we were talking about doing 30-feet spacing from, from tree to tree.
So, what type of tree are you looking at?
Um, we haven't gotten to that. Yeah, we haven't gotten our landscape plan.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
So, I think a lot of the questions that I've had that have already been answered. One point I did want to make, though, that you, when asked about that front parcel where it looks like conceptually the temporary facility would be, it looks like on the design concept that that would now be possibly sold into commercial and retail development, if I'm reading this correctly, because the imagery that I'm looking at here, for example, on page 29 of our packet, shows the proposed RV storage, the frontage on Merrill Ranch Parkway, to be a very narrow entrance point, especially in comparison to the retail development. So, is this going to be landscaped area, or is this something that's supposed to be sold for commercial and retail?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So, through the mayor, there, we could pull up exhibits, but there is a section between Circle K and our property that is not owned, that is not part of the transaction, so that could be open for development. So, what you're seeing there is a section in between, right? And with regard to that area, we would happily accept a stipulation that, that made clear that once that building is removed, that that area shall be, shall be landscaped, you know, with approval by the town staff regarding exactly how that's landscaped, so that it's attractive and not just sort of a barren spot.
I had a lot of notes. Vice Mayor can attest to that, but believe it or not, all of these have already been covered, which just leaves me with a statement. We have listened to the presentation. I've heard everything that you've had to say, and if I, I'm, I'm just, I'm looking at this, and I see a lot of... I, I'm just, I'm looking at this and I see a lot of, a lot of concerns, especially when we're looking at general public welfare. And our job up here is to do what's best. I feel Councilmember Anderson did say it best when he was referring back to the B2 zoning and what was stated and that key word being harmonious. And harmonious is lacking. There are concerns regarding traffic safety, property values. There have been citizens who have stated this is going to potentially decrease their property values. And in your own admittance, you failed to have an economic study for the impact. It has not been addressed regarding the noise or the odors and the fact remains that our community residents that have spoken out, when they purchased their homes here, this is not what they signed off onto. And it does fall under our jurisdiction to make a decision whether this is the best use for this location to allow it to move forward. We have received a recommendation from our Planning and Zoning Commission. I have no idea how this happened. Here we go. I had so many notes that some, there we go, it popped up. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak at this time prior to us voting? I see two hands up. One, two.
Royal Deland Mayor, I'm asking for a clarification. This is hard to read. The applicant said they would do Phase One, then Phase Two. Does it not say in here they'll do Phase Two after all the spaces are rented? That's what I thought I read. So that doesn't mean we do Phase One and then we jump in and do Phase Two. How long is it going to take to rent 700 spaces? That could be years. That temporary building could sit there while I'm long gone and I'm 78 years old. So I'm, they didn't say that. He said, we'll do Phase One and we'll do Phase Two. Isn't that what he said? No, he'll do Phase Two when they rent 707 spaces. And that's a red flag.
And thank you for your service as well, sir. Yes. He's letting ladies first.
Thank you. Location, location, location. And Councilmember Neal quite frankly hit it on the head. If you step back and take a look at what this development, this developer can do, this project does have a lot of merit. It's just in the wrong location. This is a perfect opportunity for the town of Florence to use that as an anchor hub for an incubator to develop businesses around the RV themselves and be able to put an RV storage place in the location that is appropriate and have enough land around it for businesses then to come in that can serve the RVs, that can help maintain them, sell products that will service the RV community. This provides jobs, it provides income, and use it as an incubator to start a whole new business opportunity here in the town of Florence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Les Buckner again. I have just three things. One is, when we talk about commercial development at that site and the concern expressed that, you know, if we don't, if we don't do the RV storage now, you know, it might sit there vacant for years and years. Well, we have an extremely fast pace of growth in our community out there. If it's all about rooftops, go out there and look sometime and look at how fast our community is being built up. It won't be long before, we're going to look much like farther north on Hunt Highway. It's going to be fully developed along there. So the time thing I don't buy. Access. The issue around access was brought up several times at the Planning and Zoning meetings. This is not a new issue. It's been punted. It's sort of like, well, let's get our conditional use permit, then we'll have to deal with it down the road, working with the city. Well, at that point, now you're stuck. Now you've got to figure out, how do we solve the problem? What I would say, if that land was developed as a shopping center, most of your entrances are going to be on Hunt Highway side. Yes, there will be, I'm sure there would be an entrance on the side, on the Merrill Ranch Parkway, but most of your traffic, I don't think is going to be using that. It's going to be off of Hunt Highway. The last thing I would say is, the general plan, and I read through the current one and I've looked at the one that's being proposed, and I'll tell you, what's being proposed now just does not fit within the spirit of that general plan. What you really need is you need to get your Economic Development Director position filled and you need to get that person to work and start working on attracting the right type of commercial development for that site that's going to serve the needs of the greater community. Okay? It is, location, location, location. You're absolutely right because this could be a great project, but just not at that site. We need it, but not at that site. We need commercial development. We need shopping and retail. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, if there's nobody further, I'm going to close that public portion and I am going to ask our council to bring forward a motion at this time.
I make a motion that we follow the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and deny this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And motion carries. Item seven is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval to become a member of the Penau County Water Augmentation Authority. Item B is approval of the fiscal year 2022-2023 Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Pension Funding Policy. Yeah, I'm just going to wait a minute. It's okay. All right. Item C is authorization to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Camp Navajo Training Center to allow the Florence Police Department to utilize the Reserve Training Center. Item D is authorization to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Arizona Diamondbacks Foundation Incorporated for a donation of the construction funds for the Florence Little League Field upgrades valued at $150,000 with the town's responsibility of the project's cost not to exceed $25,000. Item E is authorization to accept a gift of $12,112.69 in the name of Phyllis Allen for the Dorothy Nolan Center. Item F is approval to enter into a service agreement with Missoula Children's Theater for a summer theaters program. Item G is to accept the resignation of Mr. Gary Pronzo from the Planning and Zoning Commission effective May 21, 2022, and authorization to advertise for an alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Item H is approval of the February 22 and February 28, 2022 Town Council Meeting Minutes. And item I is to receive and file the following Board and Commission Minutes. One, Community Services Advisory Board Minutes of April 14, 2022. Two, Historic District Advisory Board Minutes of May 4, 2022. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda. Is there anybody who would like any items removed? If not, Councilmember Anderson?
I'd like 7G removed.
7G removed. Any others? With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve consent agenda with all items minus item G.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Go ahead, Councilmember Anderson.
I'd like to thank Gary Pronzo for his eight years on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Gary's done an excellent job for us and recognize, a lot of people don't know that the Planning and Zoning Committee meets twice a month. And besides that, they go out on site visits. This is the hardest working committee that we've got. Gary's put in a lot of time. He's been very active. He's been a very good member of that committee. And so I want to thank him for his long service to the town and also recognize the other Planning and Zoning members for their continued support of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve 7G.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Eight, new business. A is Resolution Number 1828-22. This is Discussion Approval Disapproval of a Resolution of the Town of Florence, Penau County, Arizona, adopting the tentative estimates of the amount required for the public expense for the Town of Florence for fiscal year 2022-2023, adopting a tentative annual budget, setting forth of the receipts, expenditures, and the amount proposed to be expended for various purposes, giving notice of the time for public hearing for taxpayers on the adoption of the final budget, adopting the budget in accordance with the state imposed expenditure limitation and voter-approved excess amount, declaring an emergency. Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Town Council. I'm so happy that we're getting to the end of the budget. This is one of the steps in our final budget process, adopting the tentative budget. You will see a whole slew of advertisements going out in the Casa Grande Dispatch about the truth in taxation hearing for tax levy, the adoption of the final budget, the slid notification of secondary property tax levy, the notifications for the CFD budgets. And all of this is going to take place on June 20, 2022. We will have a public hearing on the final budget and we will also at that time adopt the final budget if council approves of it. We will have public hearings on the property tax levies themselves and then those adoptions will occur on July 5. The tentative budget kicks off, allows for us to go ahead and post the tentative budget, which I already have online. It's, we have the hard copy here at Town Hall, one at the library and one at the Anthem Fire Station, number two, for public display. And it's also on our town's website for public view right now, if anyone would like to look at that. We have a total budget of $59,794,191 with exclusions of $29,111,471. And that leaves us at our maximum allowable expenditure limitation of $30,682,720 to comply with permanent base adjustment. Again, the public hearing for the budget will be held on June 20, 2022 at 6:00 PM at the Florence Town Council Chambers here at 775 North Main Street in Florence. And the purpose of the public hearing is to receive public input on the budget. A resolution now is before you to adopt the tentative budget. A no would mean that we would not have a tentative budget and the next date for the final budget is in June, on June 20. A vote of yes would mean that we're in compliance with state statutes and allowing the budget, tentative budget now to go forward and be advertised. And the total impact of the budget is within your budget, tentative budget documents themselves. I'm very happy that we've got this to this point and I feel very good about the budget. We had to work very hard, all of us did, town council staff and the department directors, all administration, to try to get this budget to work within the statutory permanent base adjustment amount. So I'm happy to present this to you tonight, council.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? All right. I've appreciated all of the engagement throughout, both from community, council, staff, and with that, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 1828-22 as read.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Item B is Discussion Approval Disapproval of entering into a rental agreement for unimproved or vacant land with the State of Arizona for Main Street Park. Ms. Garcia.
Mayor and members of council, this is a five-year agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation for the area known as Main Street Park. We have put forth a inquiry on purchasing that property. The state did let us know that it would be nine months to 12 months to be able to come back to us with a price for purchase. There is a statutory clause that states that if the area continues to be used at its original level, that you would pay for the amount of the sale that would be at the time of that use. And so that area has been used for a rest area for highway users and it continues to have remadas and things so that people can enjoy it and rest while they're traveling en route from Casa Grande to Payson, from Casa Grande using the highways. And so we'd very much like to take over and purchase that area. So we're interested in what they have to say to us. Until that time, we have put forth a five-year agreement. It does allow for a 30-day clause if we are able to purchase it. And the monthly rate of that lease is $1,293.34. The town would like to continue utilizing that as a park. And in our citizen survey, that was voted one of the most best, beautiful parks. And so it's important that we maintain it.
All right, counsel. Are there any questions, comments? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion, we approve to enter into a rental agreement for unimproved or vacant land with the State of Arizona for Main Street Park.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item nine is our department reports. Are there any questions or comments regarding the department reports? Thank you. This is our second call to the public. I do have a few that would like to speak. Anna James.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. I live at 324 North Silver Street. I'm a homeowner. My home would be, I wish I had an RV storage unit to oppose, but what I'm here for is to oppose the proposed eco station, which I would be looking at out my front door. My property is adjacent to this proposed eco station. And I just think it's a very poor use of the land, you know. Florence proper, Florence Old Town is a relatively small area and because it was designated sometime in the mid to late 70s as a designated historic town site, I think putting a dump in the middle of it is a really bad idea. So I'm opposed and I just want to voice my opinion. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming out tonight. And Ms. Bonnie Barriola.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Bonnie Barriola.
My name is Bonnie Bariola. And I live on Cheyenne Drive in Maricopa County, no incorporated city or town. I have been working with and for both Florence and Penale County for the past 30 years as Community Development Director for the town, Senior Planner for Penale County, and with the Florence Preservation Foundation during all of that time, restoring many historic properties in Florence. My concern is the planned utilities maintenance facility for water and sewer staff, Public Works Building that was presented to P&amp;Z last Thursday. It is to be located on two town blocks directly east of the current Public Works Building. I watched the meeting for another agenda item, but saw this presentation. The property is zoned R2 residential, surrounded by single-family homes. The staff report said the town is exempt from zoning regulations. The staff report also says a public hearing and a community meeting are not required for design review. And it gave the statutes for that, but the interpretation of, of the statute given did not confirm this statement. Two property owners on Ruggles were there objecting to the planned two-story metal building surrounded by a CMU wall, six feet, eight inches to eight inches high, and closing Silver Street. The commissioners and residents were told the project would not go before the council. Researching the town zoning codes, I discovered the following town zoning code for R2 says, "conditional uses." The following uses may be permitted, subject to a conditional use permit. Number eight in there says, "public utility buildings, structures, or appurtenances thereto for public services uses." If the plan, town plans to build this type project on Ruggles Street, ignoring the zoning code that says it has to have a conditional use permit approved by the P&amp;Z Commission and Council, both with public hearings, I'm just thinking, why should the town people and business building owners try to improve their properties? And why does everyone else have to follow the zoning codes? And I'm wondering if council is even aware of this planned two-story, two-lot metal building on Ruggles to be surrounded by a block wall, not to mention the trash bins the people have been speaking about tonight. One interesting thing was, it said, "no landscaping would be included." I realize you cannot comment on this issue tonight, but trust you will see, it goes through the conditional use permit process resulting in structures more suitable for downtown Florence's primary entryway and an existing residential neighborhood.
Thank you. If you want to leave that with Mrs. Garcia, she'll make sure that we receive a copy as well. I know that was the end because I could tell by your-
I, I wanted to make one comment. I thought I would have three minutes. So I've been sitting here marking out a minute, trying to get it down to two minutes tonight.
I, if you could please give a copy to Ms. Garcia.
I will email Lisa a copy of it.
Appreciate you, Bonnie. Thank you. All right. I, that is all I have. And I also see Courtney Ramirez online. Okay. Hang on. Courtney Ramirez is speaking. Hang on. Hang on.
Okay. Can y'all hear?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, for me?
Okay, so I have one question and one comment. So is there, I, I know several of us were a little shocked to hear of the resignation of Gary Pronzo with Planning and Zoning. Is there anything that the city can elaborate on that? It seemed like it was sudden, just kind of like an all of a sudden thing where it was requested by a council member that Gary resigned? Is there anything that the city can tell the public what happened?
So at call to the public, you're correct. There is no response, but I can direct a staff member to reach out and communicate with you. I do appreciate you speaking.
Yeah, I, I did ask and so far I have not, I have not received an answer from anybody over there. And my general comment, I just wanted to stress the importance of the council members, you know, everybody up there, that, you know, they've got certain ethics and morals that they need to follow at all times, whether they're up on the stage or on social media. And I think it's really important that things that are confidential stays confidential. And, you know, that they have certain mannerisms that they need to not put out on social media. Right? I think it's important for all of them to maintain ethics and morals and professionalism at all times. Okay? So just friendly reminder that they've got a position of authority, you know, and, and morals that they need to present at all times.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. I genuinely do not know what you're talking about, but I will have staff reach out to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed, come on up. I wasn't saying, no, you could not speak. I was just saying there was somebody else that was speaking. So I apologize if it came off that way.
I apologize. I, this is my second apology this evening, right? Anyway, I, the last program, the long program, brought up some issues that I think is applicable to the garbage dump. And one is, it's not a good use area. It's not an ideal use of the area. Plus, it's going to affect the values of the homes in the area. The same thing that's going to happen in Anthem is going to happen in our downtown area. That's it.
I appreciate you. And I appreciate communication. I hope everybody knows that, all of us do. All right. Ms. Buchalado?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. My name's Nicole Buchalado. I live at 360 East Ruggles Street, which is diagonal to the proposed eco station. I did attend the meeting at Planning and Zoning the other night. And I did speak while I was at that meeting. And I am opposed to the eco station being there. The building that they showed us was much nicer than I had in my head. But I, when I walked around and I talked to my neighbors and I asked people in the area their opinion on it, there was not one that was for the dump site being there. And when I asked questions about what would be used in that building, it was for like meetings and office space. And they're not sure really what was going to be on the second floor, from what I'm understanding. So I just ask, I know you guys don't have to, you know, listen to us or, or even speak on this, but we do appreciate that you guys are. And I just want you guys to just, I don't want it to be like the RV, you know, issue and people getting up in arms. I just hope that you guys understand that it is in a residential area. And although things sound pretty sometimes, they don't always end up being pretty. And I've been driving around the park every day to look at the, the garbage over there. And one day it's fine and the next day it's completely outside. Lids are left open. And I know this is going to be behind a wall. But I just think that sometimes things sound better on paper than they end up being. So I would just hope that you guys, you know, revisit this and maybe think about it being in a residential. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else this evening that would like to speak, either in person or online? All right. I do have one hand up online. And Sheri, we'll get you unmuted for a moment. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, once again. I do have to say, I was a little bit upset when I saw the agenda and there was nothing on there about the selection of our town manager. I feel that council is sometimes less than transparent to the community members. I remind each of you to please review your organizational chart. You guys report to us. It's not the other way around. I'm tired of talking to some of you and you're telling us, if you think you could do better, why didn't you run? If I wanted to run, I would. But right now, I didn't. And I'm not, but you chose to. Each and every one of you chose to. And you were elected by local community members. Therefore, you do have a responsibility to us, community members. I am seven generations deep in this town. I love it. My kids are raised here. My grandkids are being raised there. But when I saw that there was no transparency for the town manager being selected, the waste of resources, the time that the people had to take to come in to do the interviews, the money that's being wasted by you guys getting paid to do interviews, and now to be, I'm being told that it's, we're waiting until August now. So in the interim, Ms. Garcia is making more money in a position. And then somebody is having to do her position in her interim, making more money. That makes no sense to me because you guys are waiting for a vote to come in or something like that for August. But again, why aren't you guys being transparent to us, community members, on what's going on? Thank you.
You are welcome. I am just going to take a moment just to respond to the criticism because I, it's not, I believe, it's, I know that your facts are not accurate. So I am going to reach out and we'll have a, a discussion. My earliest convenience and yours may not match up, but I will coordinate through our interim town manager to facilitate that. All right. With that, we're going to close that call to the public. And our next item is our call to the council with current events only. Councilmember Mendoza.
All I got to say is, thank you for everyone that showed up. Your voices make our jobs easier, so thank you.
Councilmember Hughes.
I agree with, with Councilman Mendoza. I also want to remind people that next Monday, we are going to have another work session on code enforcement. So I would ask that anybody that is interested to come and participate in that. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Neal.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes, I'd like to see us address this issue with the facility. Maybe at a work session or something because I don't like the idea of the town not having to follow the rules.
Are you talking about the eco station?
The eco station.
So I did already direct town staff to facilitate a work session as well as to provide information prior to everybody, so there's background knowledge.
That's what I thought you were saying. I just want to make sure.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Clarification is a great thing.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
I don't have a lot. I will say this, that one of the things that I probably make it hardest to sit up here sometimes is when we are not allowed to comment back and clarify things that are either gossip through Facebook and the rumor mill or just bad information. So it, it makes it hard to sit up here and not be able to respond to you. So I would prefer, rather than just respond only to Sheri Har, that it be responded to everybody because I can guarantee you, we're not wasting our time. We're not wasting your time. We're not wasting other people's time. And we're not wasting money. We are doing our best to find the best town manager for this town. And until we find that person, we're going to take our time. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I just want to take a moment to introduce a new member to our staff during our call to council. Mr. Harvey Kraus is joining us. He served many years in ELOI and he is over our Community Development slash Economic Development Offices. So I just want to give you a warm welcome to our community. Thank you. That being said, I also want to thank everybody who took the time, not only to send email communication, if they couldn't attend the meeting tonight or for whatever reason, as well as attended. Councilmember Mendoza is correct. It does always make our job easier. I'm a proponent of communication and we all need to communicate and be on that same page. I had a conversation with Ms. Ruiz, maybe like, not really a conversation where we talked, but we, we typed back and forth. And we talked about the eco station. And I said, you know, we had this conversation about two years ago. Here was the problem. Here's how we brought this forward. And, you know, nothing is set in stone. And I always believe that flexibility is key. And we always have to have clear, honest, open communication. So thank you all for being here this evening. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.